Good afternoon. I'm Sean O'Brien, the Kingston Town Moderator. Here with me is the Town Ministerator, Keith Hickey, and we're here to discuss a town meeting, which is scheduled for May 14th at 9:00 a.m. at the Kingston Intermediate School, which is a back to the original pre-COVID location, so you might be able to hear and be a little bit more comfortable at town meeting this year, which hasn't been as easy over the last two years. So Keith, good afternoon. How are you?
I'm well, Sean. How are you? Thanks for being here.
No, thanks for having me.
Appreciate it.
We've worked hard putting this warrant together, and the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have made their votes.
They have.
And we're scheduled for town meeting, like I said, this May 14th at the Kingston Intermediate School. And at this point in time, I'd like to perhaps go through the warrants and through the articles.
Sure.
Go through the warrant and address each article to kind of do a preview.
Happy to.
Okay. Starting off with the biggest one of all, I mean, is Article One, we don't really have to touch. Article Two is payment of prior year's bill, and that was favorable by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and that's just more of a housekeeping to pay $417 from last year, correct?
Yeah, it is. We have a bill from last year. We need a separate warrant article for that. It needs 80% approval. It's $417. A couple of bills for staples that weren't paid mistakenly that were expended by the library. So we're just looking to get authorization to spend, to fund, to pay those bills.
Okay. And moving to Article Three, which is the $49 million article, that is the town budget for fiscal year 2023, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you've worked with the Board of Selectmen in putting that together?
Yep, Board of Selectmen, and then ultimately the Finance Committee and Department head. So I think we've got a pretty good budget that addresses a lot of the town needs. And so looking forward to hearing the voters' thoughts.
And it was a favorable vote both by the Board of Selectmen 5.0 and the Finance Committee 5.0, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything you want to touch on in terms of the budget process?
You know, there, it's, it's pretty much status quo, nothing huge going in and out of it. There was an additional $100,000 put into snow and ice by, that I suggested. Ultimately, the Finance Committee reallocated that, so it's still in the Streets, Trees and Parks budget. My thought was that we spend at least $100,000 more every year on snow and ice than we, than we budget for. So it's just to try to be a little more proactive, try to make sure we've got a lot closer number to the snow and ice number we normally spend. The FinCom thought it was more appropriate to take it out of snow and ice, but leave it in Streets, Trees and Parks. So if there was a need for a transfer during the year, they could do that. Beyond that, I think there is no, is an additional staffing person in Streets, Trees and Parks to get them to pre-COVID levels, but that's it. So just a pretty standard article this year.
And how much is the, this budget as compared to last year's roughly?
So it's definitely up. If I look at last year's budget, it's up over $1 million, no question. But, but, but a lot of that has to do with inflationary numbers. We've had to deal with increased costs, as everybody has, for gas and heating oil, diesel fuel, things of that nature, increases in retirement, health insurance costs. So, you know, the, the cost of doing business has increased certainly. The overall bottom line budget's gone up about a little over, a little over 2% in expenditures. So, but a lot of that's been offset by revenues as well. We've got some revenue increases.
That was going to be my next question. Has the town received more?
We have. We're receiving more money. Thankfully, you know, with COVID starting to slow down a bit, we're seeing more people go out. So our rooms and meals taxes have gone up a bit. Whether you like the topic or not, we're collecting revenues now for marijuana sales in Kingston from the recreational marijuana establishment in town. People now, because COVID has slowed, people are more willing, I think, to go to the hospital if they have a problem than they, than they were during COVID because of their concerns about getting a bed and things of that nature. So in a good respect, people are hopefully taking better care of themselves, which means more ambulance revenues for the town. But, so we are seeing additional revenue certainly. It's the same thing with all of our building activities, you know, building permits and all those fees have, have continued to increase a bit. So, you know, we still, still remain in a very healthy financial condition, which is nice.
Now, as compared to last year, assuming that all the articles and the funding requested for capital projects and, and everything else passes, how does this affect the average home here in Kingston?
So, and this is on our website as well, if people want to see it. But what I tried to do last week with the Board of Selectmen at their meeting was kind of lay out what we expect the property tax, property taxes to be for 2023, I'm sorry, 2022, having to make a couple of assumptions. Obviously, each year, home values either increase or decrease based on sales of properties in town. In 2021, the, the increase in property tax value in town for the average home was over, I think, 10%. This year, what we've estimated is a 3.75% increase in value, which frankly is probably very, very conservative. In all likelihood, it'll be a bit more than that. We've also estimated overall growth, meaning new buildings, new construction, just new value that wasn't here last year because of new construction, at about $96 million of value. So what we anticipate, even though the budget's increasing, we anticipate, based on the assumptions we've made, of a tax rate going from 1458 to 1448, so a drop of a dime. However, the average house price, single-family house, house price in Kingston in 2022 was 487, almost $488,000. If we apply that 3.75% increase, that value will go up to just over $505,000. So even though the tax rate drops, the assessed value has increased a bit. So your tax bill will go from $7,175 to $7,395. So there'll be an increase of about $220 in the average property tax value for homes that are valued lower than that. For example, a property that's assessed at $350 would see a $158 increase, and a house assessed at $750 would see an increase of $339. So again, there's some assumptions in there, but we, I feel very confident that the tax rate is certainly not going to be more than 1448. I expect it to be less than that because I think our, the assumptions we use were very, very conservative. But there will be, you know, if, if every single article passes the way it's been proposed, there will be a, an increase of about $220, $20 a month, basically, on average for a single-family home.
And then at, at town meeting, going through the budget, I will go through general budget, public safety, school, education, public works, and I'll call each one if someone wants to hold it and debate it or discuss it. They can do that, and I'll pull it out. And if no one does, then we'll just vote the budget together.
Sure.
And if not, we'll, we'll vote for what's agreed to, and then we'll discuss what's, what's not. Moving on to, we have the Article Number Four, which is the Water Department Enterprise Fund and Budget. That's basically was voted on by the Board of Selectmen 5.0 and Finance Committee 4.0. What do you have to say about this article?
Article Four, as you mentioned, would fund the operations of the Water Department. According to the Water Commissioners, if this budget were to be funded as presented, there would be no water rate increase for, for fiscal '23. So if people are concerned about their water rates increasing, what we've been told by the Water Commissioners is there would be no increase based on this proposed budget.
And then Article Five is the Water Department's Surplus Revenue, and that's been approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee unanimously, requires a two-thirds vote. And this is for repaving of?
Whistler, Whistler Lane. So there's a water main break on Whistler Lane late November-ish, I think, last year. So the Water Department and Streets, Trees and Parks worked together to patch the road as best they could because the asphalt plants had been closed. What this $75,000 appropriation would, would fund would be the repaving of Whistler Lane to its condition prior to the water main break.
Okay. Article Number Six is Transfer From the Water Surplus Revenue to Water Stabilization Fund. Again, approved unanimously by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee.
Just a way, just the Water Department is looking to salt some money away in stabilization, just like you'll see later on with the Board of Selectmen looking to appropriate some money to go into the town general fund stabilization.
And Article Number Seven is the Water Department's Request for Eminent Domain. I believe this was, this was on the Fall Warrant.
It was.
An article there.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the same thing? They're trying to have the town take land?
Yes.
And that was, I don't see Finance Committee, but I see the Board of Selectmen as unfavorable action there.
Yeah, the, the funds, the funds have already been appropriated for what the Water Commissioners feel they need if they were able to get approval from the town for eminent domain. There's an appropriation out there. So the Finance Committee didn't vote on it because there was no appropriation of funding requested. The Board of Selectmen chose at their meeting last week to not support the eminent domain.
Now, this was the, the estate.
Yeah.
Has there been any cooperation or communication that you know between, it was said at the Fall Town Meeting that the estate needed time to go through things. Do you know if there's been any communication?
I can't speak in specifics. I know the, the Water Commissioners and Water Superintendent have reached out to the estate on several occasions after the Fall Town Meeting to try to reestablish a line of communication. I don't know, I don't think there's been a lot of communication back to the Water Commissioners. I'm sure the Water Commissioners at town meeting will be happy to get up and speak to this and provide a more accurate update. But my understanding is there's been very little activity, at least on the estate's side, to move this project process along a bit. So, so the Water Commissioners have decided to ask for eminent domain for a second time.
Okay. Moving on to Article Number Eight, that's the Wastewater Department Enterprise Fund.
Same thing, just operating budget, no, no, no rate increase for wastewater. They are, you know, continue to operate, and they'll have the, some of the upgrades online later on in fiscal '23. So we're excited about that.
And do you, it was favorable by the Board of Selectmen 5.0, but there, it was a 4-1 in terms of the Finance Committee. Do you know what the objection to or?
I'm sorry. You know what? I do. The concern, I think, was, was over the language, the recommended language in the warrant article, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer of available funds in the treasury or borrow a sum. So the concern that, sum of money, and the concern I think the Finance Committee member had was, in their mind, this article language provides the ability for the Sewer Commissioners or the town as a whole to borrow some or all the operating costs of the wastewater department. So that's not the intent, certainly. I think that was the concern that the FinCom member had, so they, they chose to not support the article. It had nothing to do with the funding amount. I think it was the language in the article itself.
Okay. Moving on to Article Nine, which is the Revolving Funds. It's a majority vote, and this is a motion by the Board of Selectmen. It looks like there's some...
It's a housekeeping article. Every year, the town needs to seek authorization to spend up to a certain amount of money for all six of the established revolving funds. So this is, this is a housekeeping item that, that I think we can have, we have the opportunity to modify our, our revolving fund bylaw a bit that would identify the program and the appropriation amount on an annual basis. And if, if those were not to change, there would be no need to put this on the warrant in the future. So we are going to try to bring that change forward, either at the Fall Town Meeting or next spring, so we no longer have to deal with revolving articles, revolving funds, excuse me, if in fact there are no changes.
You're trying to shorten my meeting?
I'm trying to do the best I can, sir.
Save me some stuff. That was Article Nine. So moving forward to Article Ten, which is the Renewable Energy Favorable Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee.
The Renewable Energy is, you know, it's, again, it's kind of a housekeeping thing. It's an appropriation and a revenue of a half a million dollars for the Enterprise Fund for the Wind and Soul Developers, based on the town's power purchasing agreement with the developers. So it's, again, it's, it's a more of a housekeeping item, doesn't affect the town budget at all. It's, it's a self-sustaining enterprise fund, just like water and sewer.
Now, is the town receiving any revenue from?
We receive some revenue from, from the, yeah, from the solar, I'm sorry, from the turbines that are operating in town. Yep.
And that, I just did say that was favorable. Moving on to Article Eleven, which is Capital Equipment Project Funding. And there's a list of requests in this one. The first one is, you know, $96,000 for a truck, $65,000 to repair siding at the fire station, $130,000 to replace two patrol cars. And they're all listed in the book, which is available online.
Yeah.
$100,000 to engineer design for a construction of a public safety building, $62,000 to replace a truck, and $94,000 to replace an injection trailer, and $41,000 to replace intercom and KES.
So we've broken this article down and hope it's not too confusing for people. There are three motions that need to be made as part of the article because there are, well, there's, there's two, there's two thresholds for approvals. The items you just mentioned are going to be paid for out of free cash, which needs just a simple majority vote. They total $644,000. It will all come out of free cash as part of the Capital Improvement Plan. The Capital Planning Committee will, I assume, make the recommendation to move this. So the first part is to see if the town will authorize the expenditure of $644,000 for the items you just mentioned to come out of free cash. The second part of the, the second part of the, of the, of the warrant is requesting that the town enter into three new lease agreements. One for a fire engine, one to replace a truck, a Mack truck that's used up at the transfer station, and one to replace a 2002 dump truck that Streets, Trees and Parks operate out of. Those need a two-thirds vote to authorize the town to enter into these, into these leases. The fire, the fire engine, we're replacing a little bit earlier than we hoped. The engine one that we have continues to have significant mechanical issues that aren't, that just aren't able to be repaired. And we've, and the Fire Department has found that the truck itself is completely unreliable at this point, and it has been taken out of service. Anybody who's been watching Board of Selectman meetings, the Board recently spent a small amount of money to purchase a used engine from a community yard, I believe it is, on the Cape, to, to meet the, the, the number of engines that the Fire Department needs for the short term. The 1995 Mack truck replacement and the 2002 Sterling Dump Truck were both in the CIP to be replaced, and it's been scheduled that, that way now for a few years. We, we now really need to replace the 95 Mack because unfortunately it was involved in a motor vehicle accident earlier this year. It has just over 400,000 miles on it, and the insurance companies totaled it. So we're down a truck at the transfer station. That truck is used to haul trash back and forth. And then the last is a 2002 Sterling Dump Truck that Streets, Trees and Parks uses to plow roads, and it's a typical dump truck. That too, unfortunately, and we knew this coming into town meeting, was, was inspected last week, as a matter of fact, and failed inspection. So right now, we're down a dump truck. And if, if we're able to, to get the funding for this, it might be a little while before we get another dump truck, but at least we'll have that, we'll have them on, on order.
So the first eight projects at town meeting, I will call out by name. It looks like they were, they were all favorable from the Finance Committee, projects one through eight, as in your handout. With the exception of the $65,000 to repair Station Two siding and trim, it was Board of Selectmen favorable 5.0 and Finance Committee in capital planning. It was a 3-2 vote for finance and a 3-1. So at town meeting, I will call each project out one by one for a majority vote. If anyone wants to debate one of them or hold one, we'll hold that one, and we can vote on the other eight unless, and we'll do it separately. And then because the projects nine through 14, they require a two-thirds vote.
Yes, sir.
We'll do the same thing with those in terms of how we address it. They were all favorable votes. But the nine through 11, that's the, those are?
Existing leases.
Existing leases that we're already legally obligated to pay for anyways. So it's just more of a housekeeping thing that they're on there, and they're going to afford to account for the finance money that's going to them.
Yeah. A number of years ago, the town voted to establish a capital stabilization fund, and out of that capital stabilization fund, the lease payments will be funded. So we're looking to request funding for the three existing lease payments, as you just mentioned, and then the three lease payments for the first year of the three leases we're asking to enter into in fiscal '23. That totals $524,000, almost $525,000. There's sufficient money in that capital stabilization account for, for now and for the foreseeable future, so we shouldn't have any issues there. So we're seeking, that needs to be a separate two-thirds vote as well.
Okay. Moving on to Article Twelve is the Purchase of Equipment, Project Funding.
So Article Twelve is, we have financial software that is requiring us to update a, a module of our, of our financial software at the cost of $12,000. And how we're proposing to pay for that is to take the balance of a few unexpended articles that are no longer, that can be basically returned and reused or returned to free cash. We've listed about 10, the total of $12,000 that we need. So there'd be no impact on it, on the tax rate directly anyways. We would just be taking prior year appropriations that had not been spent yet and reapplying those to a, a purchase of a new module for a finance, the finance software.
And that was favorable by, by both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Article Thirteen is Elected Officials Compensation. Am I getting a raise?
No, I, I know, everybody was looking to give you a raise, but ultimately, it was, it was a 3-2 vote in the Finance Committee. So, sorry about that.
But there is, it looks like there's, that's the elected officials. It's the, the same numbers that it's been year in and year. But at the bottom, it looks like the collector, treasurer and town clerk are, it looks like they're proposing a wage adjustment for them.
They are. There's, there's been a wage adjustment consistent with wage and personnel employees the last couple of years. There's been some concern, or there was some concern raised by the Finance Committee last week when they, when they discussed this for a final time because there have just been cost-of-living raises given to, to those three elected positions. And I think the Finance Committee felt as though the positions in other communities are, are being funded at a higher rate than, than what we're funding our three elected officials here. So there was a decision to increase the, the treasurer, collector and town clerk position by, I believe it was 4%, rather than the 2% for, for wage and personnel employees. And the reason, again, for that, some of the wage and personnel employees, depending on where they are in their grid, they may get a step increase, which elected officials have not benefited from in the past. So there is, there is a larger adjustment for them than it has been at least the last couple of years.
So it's about a $3,000 raise for each, the collector, the treasurer, town clerk?
Yes.
$9,000 altogether for the town.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Article Fourteen, Wage and Personnel Amendment, Amendments and Compensations to the Schedule.
So there really haven't been many changes. They're outlining the warrant. Cost-of-living raises, again, will be the same as, as the KTU Union, which is 2%. As I mentioned, there are, there are some people who will receive some sort of a step raise, depending on where they fall in the, in the grid. There were some positions removed and, and added to the wage and personnel bylaw, but all the bylaw changes are outlined in the, in the actual bylaws, including the warrant. No major, no major changes have, have been proposed.
And that was favorable by wage and personnel, Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen. Article Fifteen is the Lieutenant's Contract, favorable by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee.
So the, the Lieutenant's contract was a two-year contract. It's set to expire at the end of this year. The, the thought was to extend it, extend the contract for one year at the same terms. So all of the, all of the collective bargaining agreements expire June 30 of 2023. This was the only one that was set to expire outside of that time range. So what we're asking the voters to consider is approving, extending that contract for one year. The, the wage adjustments will be the same as they were for years one and two. There is a, I believe it's a $600 change in one of the stipends to make it consistent with the patrolman's contract. That's all part of that $5,523 request to fund in Article Fifteen.
And why do it this way? Is that so everything comes up at the same time?
Yes. So when we're, when we're negotiating, we can be consistent across the board with all the union contracts and ideally offer primarily the same to every, to every union. And if we're looking to negotiate some changes, we can negotiate those collaboratively with all the unions instead of just picking apart one or two at a time. So it, you know, it's, it's a challenge to negotiate all five contracts in one year, but I think overall, it makes more sense in the, in the negotiation of those contracts.
Article Sixteen, Transfer to Employment Liability Reserve Fund. Looks like $100,000 favorable by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee.
So this money is, excuse me, is, is raised to pay out employees who are leaving employment either through retirement or resignation. So the $100,000 is appropriated, put into that reserve account. We've nearly exhausted the reserve account in fiscal '22, so we're looking to, to fund $100,000 for fiscal '23, which should take care of any of the known and unanticipated retirements or, or resignations during fiscal '23.
So as you look at through the, you have an idea of what the town's going to need each year, minus something coming up?
Sure. You know, most of the, typically, you know, a lot of the police and fire employees will notify their chiefs what their intentions are for the upcoming year. There certainly are some people in, in other departments that are of age if they wanted, wanted to retire. And then we, we always have people who may leave because they, they found other employment or their circumstances have changed and they, and they just don't, they want to move on. So we feel very comfortable that the $100,000 is going to be enough for us to fund any retirements that, that come forward in fiscal, fiscal '23.
Article Seventeen is some, something similar, Transfer of Post-Employment Health Insurance Liability Fund, $50,000 unanimous by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee.
Yeah, again, it's, it's, there's a liability that every community has with their post-employment benefits, health insurance, basically. Because we offer health insurance and, and fund up, the town funds a portion of the cost of those health insurance, of that health insurance for its retirees. There's a, there's a liability there that if everybody retired at one time, we would be, we would, we would owe a significant amount of money. So what we're trying to do now is, is put $50,000 a year into that, into that reserve account to offset the anticipated costs. In three or four years, as people may recall, a while ago, the retirement, state retirement funds or the Polonah County Retirement was significantly underfunded. They significantly increased the contributions to make up that liability or that deficit. That, that fund will become fully funded, I want to say, in fiscal '26, '27. So the thought is to reallocate some or all of those funds that are now funding the retirement costs to the OPEB liability, so we can more adequately fund that li, future liability.
And moving on to Article Eighteen, Transfer to Stabilization Fund. Again, this is moving money, $100,000.
Maybe, it's basically, we're moving into, into our savings accounts. So God forbid something So God forbid something were to happen unanticipated and we would, at that point, have two point eight million dollars in our stabilization account. So money is transferred into that stabilization account now typically annually to try to build that up as best we can.
Is that also known as a rainy day fund?
Sure.
And that was favorable, Board of Selectmen five zero, Finance Committee five zero. Article nineteen, construction of a cold storage building.
So this has had a lot of discussion at the Board of Selectmen meeting and the Finance Committee meeting. Right now, the town uses the former fire station on Maple Street as a cold storage building and frankly, as a catch-all for a lot of stuff. And so we've, I've asked department heads to weed out all the stuff in those, in that building that is no, no longer needed, which they have. I proposed to the Board of Selectmen the idea of selling that Maple Street building for a couple of reasons. And the most important one, frankly, in my mind was, as I think everybody's aware, that that property has groundwater contamination, the subsurface contamination. And the cost to remediate that contamination and also remove the building is just over five hundred thousand dollars. There are no state, there are no state funds available to fund the remediation because when the study was done a few years ago, what it was determined was that the town contributed to some of that contamination while the fire department was using that property. So the town would have to come up with the funds to remediate the contamination. Unfortunately, you know, the contamination doesn't go away. The concern I have frankly is that if it were to spread to some abutting properties, and it's a big if, there's no idea whether, no that ever happens or not. But should we, should we take that chance, you know, and take, and not do anything about it? Or should we try to, I mean, that's a decent piece of property. It's, it's less than an acre in size. But it's just off of Summer Street. And, you know, my, like I said before, my, my desire is to just get that potential liability out from underneath us. There is a property owner who owns all the property surrounding that old fire station building that's shown an interest in, in purchasing that property. We received authorization at last fall's town meeting, I believe, to sell the property. But we, there is a need for a cold storage building. We would build a cold storage building, four thousand square, four thousand square feet, excuse me, in size on the campus of the Townhouse, Streets, Trees and Parks property. It would, four thousand square feet is roughly what the size of just the bays at the Maple Street Fire Station would be, which would suit our needs, the town's needs for years to come. We, we place, you know, expensive equipment in there right now that Streets, Trees and Parks uses, the fire department use, the Townhouse uses, Parks and Recreation has storage in there as well. So there's a variety of departments that have this cold storage building that I think is really necessary to have to, to extend the life of that equipment that we have invested in as long as we possibly can. So I know it's a lot of money. I understand the concerns with that. However, you know, if we have to fill, if we have to fix that property on Maple Street, it's going to cost us more than this. So looking to try to proactively dispose of that Maple Street property.
And that was favorable votes by the Board of Selectmen in terms of the construction of the cold storage. The Finance Committee and capital planning was three to one.
Yep.
Now, moving on to Article twenty is the purchase of land by the fire station.
Yeah, so the, the fire station originally had a, one more bay than what's there now, designed on that property. When it was presented to town meeting, I believe for fiscal reasons, they eliminated one of the bays that were proposed, you know, fifteen to twenty years ago when it was built. The fire chief is of the opinion that sometime in the near future, we're going to need that additional bay to be constructed. There's a need now to, to try to acquire the building, I'm sorry, the property behind the fire station, away from Pembroke, Pembroke Street, if, if, so to speak, to allow the fire department to construct and operate out of that Pembroke Street station. This hundred seventy-five thousand dollars would purchase the property behind the Pembroke Street station and allow for the fire station in the future to expand. The property itself is about one point nine six acres, so just shy of two acres. Right now, we're, I'm hoping honestly tomorrow to have a signed purchase and sale agreement with the current owner of that property. We don't have one of those yet, but we're seeking, I feel confident we're going to get that. We've had some challenges trying to connect frankly over the last little while. So hoping to get that squared away in the very near future. So for town meeting, I can say that we have a signed purchase and sale agreement.
Got work to do.
I know it.
And that was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and Capital Planning. Moving on to Article twenty-one, which is the Sampson Fund. And that was Board of Selectmen favorable, five zero, Finance Committee five zero. Total recommendations was thirty-three thousand dollars. And this is kind of year in and year out. Money comes out of the fund to fund local projects.
Yep.
Night out against crime, Gray's Beach. Anything you want to say on that?
No, I think you just, you've said it all. I mean, it's a, it's a housekeeping issue. It's, the Sampson Fund allows for a variety of projects to be funded by a lot of different departments for the benefit of the community.
And on to Article twenty-two, Community Preservation Committee. So they have a lot going on, a lot of projects.
They do have a lot of projects. One of them, which I'm sure we'll touch on at some point, has received a lot of attention. But, you know, a lot of the ones that they've recommended, I think, have been supported nearly unanimously.
Now, what is, can you explain the funding for these?
Sure. So the community preservation funding is, is funding, at some point in the past, a number of years ago, the town voted to establish a community preservation fund, which takes a percentage of, it charges, it charges each taxpayer a percentage of their normal property tax bill. That money gets collected by the, by the collector, obviously, and that money is set aside into a community preservation fund. The fund itself has three, three different buckets, so to speak. Open space, historical preservation, and community housing that funding is deposited into. They also have a undesignedated, so to speak, where they can shift money from that to any of the, any of the three specified funding opportunities. So the funds are, you know, raised on top of the property taxes based on your assessed value in town.
Okay. And is that the open space used for that?
Yep.
Yes, yes. And so there's a number of projects. Most of them have been favorable by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. They're, they're listed in the, in the warrant and will, at town meeting, we'll go through each one of them. But I think the, the biggest one is for Gray's Beach. Want to touch on that at all?
Yes, and thank you. So obviously, for anybody who's familiar with Gray's Beach, there's a playground down there. That playground, right now, the equipment in that playground is about eighteen years old. And when it was installed eighteen years ago, the useful life was fifteen to twenty years. The Recreation Commission and the Parks and Recreation Director have been having somebody take a look at the equipment over the last few years because of its age and have removed portions of the equipment out of the playground because they were in a condition that really provided a risk of somebody getting hurt. Last fall, the Recreation Commission and Parks and Recreation Director had an outside consultant come in and evaluate the existing playground at Gray's Beach. And they found that there were, there were, the condition of the playground itself was, was ranged from parts of the playground really needed nothing to be done to it to the playground, portions of that, of that equipment should be removed. Really, the playground equipment is at the end of its useful life. So the Parks and Recreation worked with a consulting firm to look at the different options they had available to them for playground equipment. They have chosen a playground that thinks the best, they think best fits the needs of the community. The, there are a number of benefits to moving to this type of playground equipment and, and I can't speak to those nearly as well as our Parks and Recreation Director, Susan Woodworth. So just to put a plug into another exciting TV show that I've been part of. Susan and I did a TV show where we got into a little bit more depth of the playground itself, why it needs to be replaced, what the conditions are, why they chose the playground that they did, the materials that they did, and what the benefits of that playground are. Just in, you know, very briefly, I guess, the playground cost itself is, you know, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's a lot of money, no question about that. That being said, the, the five hundred and thirty-six thousand, I'm sorry. The, there's a lot of things that are tied into that in addition to the playground equipment itself, the, the, the ground itself, there's a lot of drainage problems. If anybody goes down there after a rainstorm right now, it's, you tend to see a lot of puddling and things of that nature. Those types of things are going to get fixed. There's also going to be a rubberized piece of flooring, so to speak, that will be installed inside the playground that would allow people who may have some challenges maneuvering through the bark mulch material that's there now, whether it be wheelchairs, canes, you know, crutches, things of that nature. It'll be a level surface that's recommended by the playground agencies and organizations to, to make sure that the kids are safe and the people who are using the playground are safe. What that does is allows a person who may be concerned about walking around on uneven ground at the existing Gray's Beach playground to be able to walk on a third of the area much more confidently because it's, it's more compact, it's level, it's, there's no trip hazards, things of that nature. So, you know, as we said in our TV show today that you might notice, and again, and we're not, I'm not trying to threaten anybody by, by this comment, but it's just reality frankly is, you know, we have a, we have a, an audit done by a professional who reviews playgrounds who have identified liability. I think one of the responsibilities I have is to make sure that whatever, whatever liability is out there, no matter what it may be, we mitigate that to the best of our ability. And so if this, if this does fail at town meeting, you know, we'll have that auditor come back in later on in May or June. It'll have been six months, it'll have been another winter, and recommend what we can repair and safely use and what needs to be removed and/or, or if worst case scenario, I guess, we have to close the playground down. And again, I'm not trying to say that to be either or. I'm just trying to be as honest as I can be with the people. And if, my fear is that if we have something up that has been identified as a risk and God forbid a child gets hurt, the impact, the financial impact of the town could be much more than five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So.
Now, is that just one bid or are there other companies? Do you?
Yeah, they, this, the Recreation Commission has looked at a variety of companies and looked at a variety of prices. We could, frankly, we could replace the, the playground, from what I understand, using the same sort of materials that are there now for a little bit less money, but not significantly less money. The materials that they're proposing to put in, while it has the same expected life of fifteen to twenty years, there are less areas that could get damaged or need maintenance during that fifteen to twenty years. So the Recreation Commission thought this was the way to go. They made some presentations to a variety of groups. They had open meetings at the Recreation Commission where they heard some input. They presented the plan, or the options that they had available to them, to some youth groups. And the youth groups were, I think unanimously, looking at this proposal that the Recreation Commission has brought forward. So the experts have weighed in.
Are you suggesting we lower the voting age for this one?
Well, I, perhaps.
So it wasn't, it's kind of split with the Board of Selectmen, not favorable by the Finance Committee. And, you know, Community Preservation Committee was a three-two, capital planning was a three-one. Do you know what the, you know, the town is reasoning for, not the town, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee?
So I think, again, my, my, in listening to the debate back and forth amongst all the committees, you know, I think the biggest concern was cost and I certainly understand and respect the concern of that. However, it's, you know, it's an asset that was installed. It needs to be replaced or not. Maybe there's a desire not to have a playground on a Gray's Beach anymore. A couple of comments were made, obviously the expense. Whether, whether this gets approved at town meeting or not, your property taxes aren't going to change. And I think that's important for people to realize. This, this money has already been collected. It's sitting in, in the, in the Community Preservation Treasury. The Community Preservation Committee has voted to support the, the use of their funds for this purpose. Again, it was a three-two to one vote, so it was favorable, but it was almost split. But this, again, won't impact your property taxes. So I just make sure people are aware of that one way or another. So there was that issue.
But there's only, is there only so much that, that, you know, you can spend every couple of years out of that fund for projects?
Yeah, so that, you know, every, every year, additional funds get, get collected through property taxes and are placed back into that fund. The last couple of years, they've spent a little more than I think they have in the past because of, you know, frankly, some of the projects were more expensive. Last year was Winter Street, this year is the Gray's Beach Playground. The other thought or comment that I heard, that I don't really know how much it weighed in completely, but, and I think the Recreation Commission will discuss this briefly at town meeting. Last year, with the use of these community preservation funds, there was an approval for a beach volleyball court down at Gray's Beach. They never got to construct it last year. And then when they had this audit done of the Gray's Beach Playground, they found the severity, the condition of the playground, they opted to turn that money back into community preservation for the, the beach volleyball court and ask them that if they were to support the playground, the funds that were already approved for the volleyball court be reallocated to the playground funding. So, so some people on those boards and commissions that I heard were concerned or disappointed that, you know, the voters approved that project and the project ultimately did not move forward. So I think there will be, either the Recreation Commission or the Parks and Recreation Director will get up to speak to that comment.
Okay.
If necessary.
Well, I'm sure, I hear a lot on that one.
You could.
Chapter ninety funds Article twenty-three, kind of a housekeeping thing. Board of Selectmen favorable, Finance Committee favorable.
We get money every year from the state to repair roads. That's really just the authority to spend the money they give us.
Well said.
Thank you.
Twenty-four, fund reconstruction of tennis court, Silver Lake Regional School.
Yeah, this is the second year in a row they, the Silver Lake School Department has looked for this. Last year, it was passed over because all three communities need to approve this, to have it be funded. By chance, last year Kingston's town meeting was after Halifax and Plimpton's. At least one of them last year voted no. If one votes no this year, then, then the appropriations don't, the, the funding doesn't move forward. There is one of the two town meetings, and I'm sorry, I think it's Halifax that's before ours. So it may be that if Halifax votes down the tennis court funding request, we may pass over this article again. If they don't and they support it, then my assumption is it'll be heard and be dependent on what Plimpton does after ours.
And does the school have any other funding options to try to do this program or projects, excuse me?
I think it's difficult for them. I mean, they could certainly potentially use any funds that are unexpended from their operating budget if they wanted to. But I think it's tough for them, and I don't want to speak for them. But I think it's tough for them to, to expect that they're going to have those, that, that amount of money. to, to expect that they're going to have those, that, that amount of money unexpended at the end of the year.
And that was Board of Selectmen five-zero, Finance Committee four to one. And moving on to Article twenty-five, grant match funds for Jones River Cleanup.
So, a couple of things on this one. So, this is simply looking to transfer funds from a previous grant that is a balance that's been unexpended. No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong line, I apologize. This is the Jones River Cleanup, I apologize. Raise and appropriate. So, this is to raise and appropriate funding of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for, which, which is the equivalent of forty percent of a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, to do some cleanup at the Jones River, on the Jones River. If, if people have heard the discussion at the Board of Selectmen meeting, there is some, there are contaminants flowing into the Jones River right now from a variety of sources. This project would, would focus on Elm Street, near the Elm Street Bridge, if people know where the Water Department is, at the bottom of the hill, to upgrade the drainage basins that the surface water flows into before it goes into the Jones River, to try to clean up some of the contaminants that flow into the river, whether it be from road runoff, not to get too, too descriptive, but from failed septic systems in some cases, or, you know, dog waste that maybe on the road that might get into the catch basin that ultimately goes directly into the river without any sort of ability to screen some of that out. So, the Recreation, I'm sorry, the Conservation Agent is looking to apply for a couple of different grants. The first grant is a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that would install those catch basins to remove some of the contaminants before it gets into the river. It's a kind of a difficult project to, to describe the funding on because right now it's a forty percent match, that match may drop from forty to something less than that. So, the example I've used is if we only spend a hundred and sixty of the two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, what I would do is come back at fall town meeting, ask to transfer a hundred thousand dollars out of free cash to offset the appropriation that was made at this town meeting for the hundred thousand dollars that ultimately was raised but didn't get expended. So, the, the net tax rating, the net tax increase would be the hundred and sixty thousand dollars that had been expended.
So, I guess in layman's terms, the town has to put up the money to show the state that they're committed to this project, but the money may be returned.
Yeah, we don't have, they won't consider a grant unless we have matching funds. The, the estimate that, that the Conservation Agent received was a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Do I have a bid for that? I don't. I have an estimate from the agency and some companies that do the work. Some of that, we're hoping that some of that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars isn't needed and will be returned to free cash. We just don't know that. We know it's a lot of money to ask for, but, but we would like to start seeing some remediation to the water going into the Jones River.
Okay. And that Board of Selectmen was a four to one, and the Finance Committee did not support this project, zero four. Moving on to Articles twenty-six, and this is a hundred and five thousand dollars from the elementary school roof project.
So, over the last few years, the town has appropriated funds in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for a, so, a school rooftop heating units. The, the S, the, the appropriations are based on estimates. Fortunately for the town of Kingston, the town received some funding from the Mass School Building Authority, and the, 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 the project itself cost less money than was anticipated. So, so right now, the town has two hundred thousand dollars from a previous free cash appropriation for this purpose. We're a hundred and five thousand dollars short for ju, and to just pay cash for the project. So, what the Treasurer is recommending is we rescind the authorization of borrowing and just take the hundred, an additional hundred and five thousand dollars out of free cash, pay for the rooftop units' cash and not have to incur any debt. We have the funding to do it in free cash, so the recommendation is just to pay cash and get beyond this and not fund it over debt for some period of time.
And that was unanimous with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. Article twenty-seven is pretty straightforward, it's replace the pump of, of a boat, and it was favorable by the Board of Selectmen five-zero, and see the town will vote thirteen thousand five hundred dollars.
So, this was a last-minute article last week from the Waterfront Committee. They have funds in their, in their Waterways Improvement Funds to, to fund these sort of things. The engine on the pump-out boat fails and can't be repaired, so what they're asking for is thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to buy a new engine for that boat. There is, again, no, no tax rate impact that comes from the, from the Waterways Improvement Fund, from the revenues that are collected down at the, the waterfront. It's a nineteen ninety-four engine that needs to be replaced. The, the, we have to appropriate the entire amount of cost, which is the thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Seventy-five percent of the engine costs will be reimbursed to the State of Massachusetts Division of Fisheries in accord, in accordance to the Clean Vessel Act program. So, again, we have to appropriate the money, submit the invoice, and, and then the, the Waterways Improvement Fund will be given seventy-five percent of that thirteen-five back. The one thing that you're going to see on this article is a request in the motion, excuse me, to fund it out in fiscal twenty-two rather than fiscal twenty-three, which we can do. What that would, what that would allow for is if it were to be approved at town meeting, and after town meeting adjourns, the Waterfront Committee could call a dealer and purchase that motor, not have to wait till after July first, because they need, they need the motor now. So, the request will be to fund it out of fiscal twenty-two. It's, like I said, it's coming out of that, that reserve account, so it won't be.
Doesn't become an unpaid bill.
No, not unless you don't pay it.
And that was favorable by the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee.
Yep.
I don't have a vote on that. Article twenty-eight is repurposing of conservation funds.
Yeah, thank you. So, this was what I started to describe a minute ago, there was a.
You're doing a good job.
I appreciate that. There was a grant in two thousand and eight that the Conservation Department received. Since that time, the, the, the grant funds were expended for the purpose that they were applied for. There's a balance in the, in that, in that fund, and the USDA has said that we can reallocate that money for the conservation purposes and spend that money, they don't want it back. So, what the Conservation Commission and Agent is doing is looking to repurpose the funds and apply for, apply those funds towards Camp Nekon and making sure that Camp Nekon is, is only used for conservation purposes. There's been some abuse out there, frankly, of the land, and so the Conservation Commission and Agent have, have stepped up their efforts to try to eliminate, you know, vehicle use out there that that isn't supposed to be used, there's been campfires, bonfires, all sorts of stuff out there. So, we'd like to better secure Camp Nekon, these funds would go, go towards doing that.
And that was favorable votes by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Moving to Article twenty-nine, which is establish a stabilization, stabilization fund for Silver Lake Regional School, and I think this might circle back to the tennis courts a little.
It does, in, in some ways. This would allow the Silver Lake Regional School District to, to set aside funds in a stabilization account, so it would be, it would, it would be used to fund unbudgeted district needs. So, could they fund the tennis courts out of it? Sure, if there was funding available in that, to that amount of money, I, I'm sure that they could do that if they wanted to. So, this is a request, and I think it was raised last year, if I'm not mistaken, at town meeting, I think. I know this has been discussed, and it may not have moved forward, so I apologize if it wasn't, but this has been on, on the docket for a little while, at least in discussion purposes. They're looking, so the, the Silver Lake is looking for, you know, another tool in their toolbox, so to speak, to be able to deal with some of the capital items that are coming down the road for them, because the school is aging and the infrastructure of that school is aging as well.
And that was supported by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee five-zero, respectively. And turning to Article thirty, request to sell town-owned land.
So, there was a presentation at the Board of Selectmen meeting, I would guess in April, by a, a, a family who owns property, and you'll see a map in the, in the town meeting handout. The, the pro, there's a property owner, a single property owner that owns, that owns all the property around this town-owned piece of property off Route forty-four that has frontage on Route forty-four. They would like to, what they're saying is they would like to develop on that site some sort of a cranberry bog as a legacy project for the family, and they don't need the town piece of property to do that. The town property is three point eight-two acres. I've discussed it with department heads who don't feel as though there's a real need to keep that piece of property. So, the, the thought was, was to raise it, was to offer it, get authorization to sell it, and then sell it, or put it up for bid, you know, again, candidly, in all honesty, chances are, because of its location and who surrounds it, it might be sold to the, the likelihood will be sold to the, the property owners who will buy it, but we would go through the, the bidding process and, and see who, who's, who the highest bidder is. So, the board voted to, excuse me, include it in the warrant, but as you'll probably see on the, in the warrant itself, the board voted one-three-one not to support it. The Finance Committee voted five-nothing to support it. So, I'm sure the board can, can discuss the rationale for not supporting it, and, and ultimately, if, if there's not a need or not an interest in selling it, we won't. Like I said, my understanding is from testimony in front of the Board of Selectmen, the group that's looking to build that cranberry bog will, will build without, whether, whether the town sells them that property or not.
They just build around it.
Yeah.
Is there any commercial or residential value in that property, at least what the town owns?
No, there's no direct access to Route forty-four, so I, I don't know if there's a heck of a lot of value at all for us to retain it for any, any purpose at this point at all.
And you just said the town, the Finance Committee did support it though, five to zero.
Mm-hmm.
And Article thirty-one is to amend the bylaws in terms of single-use plastic bags.
Yeah, so the Recycling Committee has proposed an amendment to the general bylaws to restrict the sale of single-use plastic bags, which, you know, you would, you, you would typically get at a lot of different stores around.
Mostly the supermarkets, right?
Supermarkets, you know, Home Depot, Lowe's, use those, depending on the size of, of the articles you've purchased. You know, obviously, there's some concern, I think, from the Recycling Committee that the, you see a lot of those plastic bags disposed of inappropriately, and, so they would like, they think there's, and, and my understanding is they don't get, they don't, they don't, that's the word I'm looking for, not disintegrate, but decompose.
They last forever.
They last forever, thank you, that's a better way to say it. So, I think there's some concern that they've raised on that as well, so I'm sure the Recycling Committee will get up and speak to that article.
And that was voted on by, unfavorable by the Board of Selectmen, three to two. Turning to Article thirty-two, amendment to general bylaws, Chapter Four, Community Preservation Committee.
So, the Committee, this request is to expand the makeup of the committee to be either a select person or a member, or a member of the Affordable Housing Trust on the Community Preservation Committee. So, at times, there has been an open seat. This would allow for a member of the Kingston Affordable Housing Trust to, to be appointed a member of the Community Preservation Committee if there was an opening from the Housing Authority.
Was the thought behind it, first option would go to the Board of Selectmen, but if no one took it, they could?
So, the Housing Authority, by, in, in the bylaw right now, a seat on the Community Preservation Committee is, has been authorized to the Housing Authority. Over the last couple of years, for whatever reason, there has not been a member of the Community Preservation Committee from the Housing Authority. So, what this, this amendment to the bylaw would do was if the Housing Authority did not fill that seat, a, a person could be appointed from the Affordable, Affordable Housing Trust instead. Where right now, rather than having a seat remain vacant, there would be an option for another board to fill that, that seat and have a full board on the, on the Community Preservation Committee.
And that was favorable by the Board of Selectmen four to zero.
Mm-hmm.
Article thirty-three, earth removal.
So, the, the Planning Board has recommended this. The thought behind it frankly is that there's some concerns that have been raised by the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, that developers in some cases are, are coming into property that they own and, and just mining all, as much of the land as they possibly can and selling that, selling the earth that they're removing for a pretty substantial profit. Ultimately, there's been some studies, I guess, shown that indicate that that harms, that harms, that harms the, the ability to, the ability, or that harms the earth, long-term interest of the earth. So, what we're trying to do here is, is just stiffen up the, those, that, that bylaw bit to make it a little more challenging to remove as much fill as has been removed in the past.
And that was favorable by the Board of Selectmen four to zero and Planning Board three to zero. Article thirty-four is an amendment to the general bylaws. Is this the one that may not be going forward?
Yes, I believe that it is. No, it's not.
No, I'm sorry.
I apologize too, I get these confused as well. This would, what this would do is, is changes, so let me just read the sentence. So, "In addition, the Board of Selectmen may appoint up to three non-voting mem, associate members for terms of one year, one of whom, it now says, shall be a selectman," and they're looking to change it to "may be a selectman." So, again, what they're doing with this is they're proposing to loosen the bylaw a bit, so if a selectman can't, for whatever reason, be on the Agriculture Commission, they can appoint a person to represent them.
And I confused this with the last one.
Me too.
And that was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, so it's just allowing them to fill the board if the Board of Selectmen can.
Yep, exactly.
Article thirty-five, amendment to Chapter ninety, Section five, end veterans' property tax work-off program.
So, this was brought forward. Right now, there's a, there's a senior work-off program. The state now has, has broadened that a bit to allow a veterans' work-off program, and what that really does is for veterans who need some assistance in paying their property taxes, they can come in voluntarily and offer to work for the town in lieu of minimum wage. We would, we would offer veterans, like we do the seniors, and what do you, what are you good at, what do you like to do, is it office work, is it something outside? They could choose, you know, what department they wanted to work in primarily, and, and what they can do, and we would put them in a position to, to work, to provide help to our departments for the value of what minimum wage is for, I believe right now, our, our property tax credit we give to them to doing that is seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, we're looking, you know, there's, there's some, so that, we're looking to expand it to, to see, to veterans at this point. To be consistent with the seniors, we, we, we may be looking at, there's, there's some discussion at staff level, at least at this point, to try to look at modifying the, the existing terms of that, of those bylaws that have been around for quite some time.
And moving on to, and that was favorable by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Moving on to Article thirty-six, petition, Article zoning district. That was the one from the five acres to the.
Yeah, this is the one that, you know, the, the, the lead person who submitted the petition has chosen no longer to want to move that petition forward. because they, they couldn't get all of the signatures to remove the petition that they did to put the petition in. The recommendation's going to be to pass over this article.
And what was the article trying to accomplish?
Well, I think it was trying to accomplish allowing for agriculture, aquaculture, horticulture, floriculture, and a number of other cultures to be on smaller parcels than what's allowed now. They could have gone on 1.25 acre parcels, where I think now it's five, five acres, so. Yeah, so what they were looking to do is have the ability to farm to a certain extent, a variety of different farming activities on an acre and a quarter parcel rather than five.
Do you know what each of those cultures mean?
No, I could do.
No, by town.
I'll, I will try to do that.
That was, that wasn't voted on, maybe probably because it's a citizen's petition.
It's a citizen's petition, which isn't why it's, and, and again, the petitioner is looking to, at least the lead petitioner's looking to pass over this. So I, it can be moved at town meeting, but-
Looked like it's done.
The petition is not looking to have that done.
Last but not least, Article 37, and this is dealers and precious metals.
So we had, we had a dealer come in who deals in precious metals, who would like to shorten the amount of waiting time for certain precious metals. And I'm not a precious metal dealer, so I'm not going to try to play one on TV. But there's a certain, there's a certain period of time that, that if you want to, want to sell a precious metal to a, a dealer, that dealer has to hold that precious metal for a certain period of time, and I think it's 30 days. What that does is, is it requires, it provides law enforcement an opportunity that if that precious metal was stolen, to check in with the, the precious metal dealers to see if in fact the article that they have taken in was, was stolen rather than just flat-out sold to the, the precious metal dealer. Reducing the waiting time, according to the person who is interested in having the waiting time reduced, allows him to not be as conservative in, in his, in his investment. Because the, the, the period of time they have to wait, the fluctuation in the market can, can, can change drastically. The shorter the waiting time, the less risk you have, because the market may not change as much. The concern that the police department has is twofold. And it all has to do with, with the waiting period. If you shorten the waiting period, it'll be the, potentially one of the shortest waiting periods in the state, which while this, this precious metal dealer may be the nicest guy in the world.
The thieves will find him.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, we'll have second, we'll have other precious metal dealers that may want to relocate to Kingston, because we have a short turnaround time, and they may be more profitable than somebody who has the full extent of the waiting period. So the police department is, is opposed to this article. I'm sure Chief Spahn will get up and speak to that at town meeting. What it does is it potentially handicaps the police department's ability to do their due diligence before this precious metal is sold to a third party after the waiting period. So we'd ask that, so the, the police department is asking that this, that the voters vote this down.
Held for discussion.
Absolutely.
So that's the 37 articles that we will hear on May 14th at 9:00 a.m. at the Kingston Intermediate School. I'm also putting together, which will be on the town website, a consent agenda for articles that generally have little debate, that have passed unanimously in the past, that are supported by the Finance Committee, along with the Board of Selectmen. I'm just checking back with town council to get their stamp of approval, and it should be on the website and part of a handout at town meeting on the 14th. Just please remember, it is a back-to-theoriginal, pre-COVID location at 9:00 a.m. We do need a quorum of 100 people there. I hope to have 400, but we need, need at least 100, be ready to go right at nine o'clock. Thanks for sitting with me for 90 minutes.
Appreciate you taking the time.
And we'll see you in two weeks at town meeting, thank you.